Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the community forum that the League of Women Voters is sponsoring. I think this is the third time that we've been to Bald Head Island and done forums for you, so I'm glad you invited us back. I'm Barbara Burrell, and I'm Brunswick County Voter Services Chair for the League's Lower Cape Fear organization. Before we begin, just a few notes, a few rules. Please shut off your phones. I'm sure you've already done that. Please, no clapping, cheering, hissing, booing during it, but just lots of clapping at the end for all our candidates who have put forward their ideas for you. Our moderator tonight is Remi, Ramon Kleinberger, Kleinberg, excuse me. She'll be our moderator. Sue Ann Rush, who's sitting up here, is keeping the time, and I think you all know how it works, and it'll beep when it's over. And Sue Ann, Sue Marsh is helping her out, just in case something goes wrong with the electronic equipment. And I also want to thank the officials at the Homeowners Association for setting this up and working with us. And you'll find these little Vote 411 cards at your place, and this is something that the National League and the State League does, and it asks all candidates electronically to put in some of their information. They can put in their picture or video, they answer some questions, and anyone who does that, then residents of a community can go in, put in their address, and find out more about the candidate. So I know at least some of you have done this. If not, you might have another day or two to get your information in, and you'll have an email out there waiting for you. I wanted to let you know that. And then finally, I just want to say that this is being livestreamed and recorded with links posted on the Bald Head Association's website, baldheadassociation.com, and we're final, and we have a method, too, for people to text questions, just in case at the end, if there's some time, people could, the audience here or at home, could ask questions, but they have to be questions for all of the candidates, so no questions can just be pointed at one candidate. It's very important to us that all candidates have equal amounts of time to talk to. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Professor Kleinberg, who's from the University of North Carolina, UNCW. So thank you very much for doing this.
Thank you, Barbara. Thank you for inviting me here. Welcome, panel, community members. What we're going to do today is, what I've done, is I've devised a set of questions based on the main concerns that were sent to the Communications Director Pam Hansen and other community members that just sent direct questions. So hopefully, we'll be able to cover the majority of them. What we are going to begin with is that each panel member will start with a three-minute statement, both introducing themselves, and secondly, giving us an overview of a vision statement. After that, I will start asking questions. I'm going to direct questions to different people, not necessarily in a round robin style, but based on the nature of the question itself, but everyone will have 90 seconds to respond to that. We've got a timekeeper in the front, so we'll have to stay within 90 seconds unless you're speaking for a shorter period of time. Okay, so let's get started. We'll begin with Mr. Robert Drumheller, and then just go down the line to speak about yourself and your vision statement.
My wife and I have been coming to Bald Head for over 30 years to enjoy the beauty of the island. But when we came here full-time, we realized that the island was moving in the wrong direction and suffering from neglect. We are at a tipping point right now. This is why I decided to run for council along with Lou and Nathan, and to bring my expertise of managing over $15 billion of complex infrastructure financings to help get Bald Head back on track. We want a family-friendly island with property owners who want to preserve the island's environment. We will implement policies to guide growth and keeping with the island's natural beauty. The council's clear-cut development of the public safety area and the contractor's yard do not show concern for the environment. Respect involves more than painting contractor buildings green. There's much talk about the ferry. Vote no on the general obligation bond so that property owners do not guarantee debt on behalf of everyone. More importantly, the village has no agreement with Limited, there are unresolved legal and regulatory issues, and Limited will not sell to the village. The council's action could result in an unattractive sale to private sector investors. Talk about the ferry now is unproductive and distracting us from other, more important issues. Debt is going to grow due to aging infrastructure and beach erosion. We need to expand water and sewer infrastructure, repair our roads, replace public safety equipment. I will bring my experience in infrastructure debt to develop a strategy to manage this. The council wants a new $2 million village hall. We will find a cheaper alternative space for administrative staff. Without better management, debt could soon increase to over $85 million. A few years ago, my house, the house next to me, burned down. The village's ladder truck sprayed a wall of water to protect my house. Today, that truck is 26 years old, in a state of disrepair off the island, and frankly, needs to be replaced. We will invest in public safety equipment and in human resources to better provide enforcement for basic ordinances for ice vehicles, parking, and traffic. There are great businesses here on the island. About 20 commercial lots have yet to be sold. We will work with Limited, business owners, the VHA, and others to create building standards for new businesses to exist in harmony with the island. The council's done nothing on this subject. Our neighbors speak at council meetings only to be ignored. Our team will implement two-way discussions with property owners on significant proposals before votes are taken, and we will establish task forces to advise on key issues. This is time for change, and I ask you to vote for the Lou, Nathan, and Robert team. Thank you.
Mr. Gardner?
Thank you very much. My name is Scott Gardner. I thank you all for being here. I want to talk a little bit about myself. I spent my career at Duke Energy, dealing mostly during that career in local government community relations, and my last five years, working at the state level with state government. So very familiar with how local government works and how state government works, and that experience has been instructive since I've been on the council. I also want to talk a little bit about my service with the village. I have served on the broadband committee, the Hurricane Florence Task Force Planning Committee, and I've been on the council for over a year now. My approach to governance is I'm data-driven. I listen to all sides, and granted, there's a lot of difference between the sides on this island, but I listen and talk to a lot of people and try to generalize to the center of the road, and what I want to do is do what's best for the most. That's the way I approach my votes when we deliberate. I'm a firm believer in consensus building. I'm a firm believer in negotiating and compromising. My vision for the island, when Ann and I first moved here, we loved it for the natural beauty, we loved it for the golf carts, we loved it for the ferry ride, all the things that make this place so unique compared to other coastal communities. And if you talk to people, and this was 1997, if you talk to people that came 20 years ago, 15 years ago, 10 years ago, five years ago, this year, and you ask them, what is it about this place that made you buy? We love it for its nature, we love it for the golf carts, we love it for the ferries. So although some people would lead you to believe we're falling apart, that's not true. People that come and buy today love it for what it is today. Friends of ours who've been coming for 25 years show up and talk about how wonderful it is today. It's not falling apart, okay? But we are growing, and the role, what is the role of government in it? Well, the role of government is providing essential services: water, wastewater, trash, stormwater management, beach stabilization, roads, and so forth. On most all fronts, we are well on our way to build out. We've got a water system that's built for build-out, we've got a public safety building that's built for build-out, we're working on a wastewater treatment plan expansion to build for build-out. We're forward-thinking in our approach, and we're making a lot of progress in that front. When it comes to the ferry, a lot to be said about the ferry, but I will just hit the highlights. When the bond proposal was presented by the TA back in December, it was, it had many questions, including the sales price, including the transparency getting to that point, and the responsiveness of the transportation authority when questions started being asked. Because of the lack of responsiveness, the village was afraid the Local Government Commission would not approve their proposal, so we presented a proposal to step in the shoes if we needed to. In doing so, we can save 5.5 million on the front, we can save $445,000 a year for operating. Vote yes for the GO bonds, and I would appreciate your vote in November. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gardner. Ms. Hill?
I haven't even started yet.
That's very intimidating.
Not fair.
Ms. Hill?
Okay, thank you. First of all, thank you to the League of Women Voters for making this possible, for the association for providing the space and the technology, and more, and to our moderator, thank you very much for coming to our island. But more specifically, and is to all of you who are here and are listening in, who care about your village government and are taking the time to come and listen. So I first came to Bald Head in 1985 as a day tripper. I moved then into vacationing here a couple of times a year. From there, I bought a Swan's Quarter unit that we use for rental purposes as well as vacationing, and ultimately found a way to live here full-time in 1997. So any of you who've been on Bald Head for a while know that over 30 years of being on Bald Head means that you have volunteered for many things, right? That's just a given for being on Bald Head. But in January of 2020, I was asked by the current council to fill a vacancy for a seat that was open due to a resignation. I'd been asked to run for council before, but had never really felt I had the time to responsibly represent the village. But at that point in time, my consulting business was at a place where I felt that I could give the time, the energy, the focus that I think is needed to be a responsible council member. So where am I now? So now, here we are, two years later, and I've decided to run for council. You know, I thought about that the first time, did I want to do it? How did I feel about it? And now that I've been on it, I can't say that I regret a single day of serving on council. I've been, had the opportunity to work with a wonderful village staff, good counselors who respect each other's opinion, listen to all sides, and we worked to come up with a compromise. I also realized that my long time on Bald Head probably brings a lot of knowledge and expertise and understanding, but it wasn't until being on council that I realized how much there is to know. This is, we have complex issues, and we may seem to have easy, simple answers, but they're complex issues that affect all island stakeholders. And so I've decided that because they've schooled me for two years, that I should now take that and not just serve, but able to truly give back what has been given to me by the village in the last two years and by having lived here for, since 1997. So I appreciate your support. My goal is that we have a government that is based on reasoned, we govern, excuse me, based on a reasoned approach and based on facts and information, and that is willing to compromise and work together. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hill. Mr. McBrayer?
I live on an island. We live on an island. I do not take that very lightly, but I also never pass up the chance to say that, because I don't know about you, because a lot of you have your masks on, but that puts a smile on my face. And it puts a smile on my face because it's a wonderful, amazing place that we all are so lucky to live in and around. We have the beach, we have the forest, we have the marsh. How could we be any more fortunate? So my name is Nathan McBrayer, and I'm running for council because of this, because I see this as my home, not for just today, but for the next 30 years. I see it as an opportunity for me to give back and to be a part of this community, but also to take a look at what I can do with what my background is to allow me to make this place a better place for all of us, even the people who haven't even found it yet. So who am I? For those of you who know me, I'll say that I am Lori's husband. I'll just stop right there. That should probably be the best reference I could give. I'm very fortunate to have a wonderful family that has shown me this island. It was Lori who first brought me here. But for those of you who do not know who I am, I'm a father, I am a husband, I'm also a chief financial officer, I'm a CPA. I also have other credentials as a Certified Information Technology Professional. I have others, my master's, I have other certifications related to the management and accounting services. I've been doing my job as a chief financial officer and director of portfolio operations for over 30 years. And what that brings to the table for my opportunity to be a part of the council is the ability to understand budgets, to look at how we handle the funds, you know? Do we have an adequate number of restricted fund balances for future issues? You know, the things that haven't occurred today, but are going to occur tomorrow, because a lot of things that we deal with on this island, it's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when. I have been very fortunate to work with Lou and Robert on looking at all the issues that is about to happen, is happening, and could potentially happen to this island. And based on that, I do want to be your councilman, councilperson, because I want to be able to use my skills to help our island prepare ourselves for the future. So I'll, in my remarks, was saying, thank you so much for all the people who've been involved in putting this together. I'm glad that we have a voice and an opportunity to be able to speak to everyone, and I'll just leave you with the one thought: We live on an island.
Thank you, Mr. McBrayer. Okay, I'm going to begin with my first question, and I'll direct it at you individually. The transportation system is one of the key issues of concern to the island community. Please address this issue by stating your position on ownership of the island's transportation system. Let me begin with Ms. Hill.
Okay, thank you. The issue of ownership of the transportation system is not new. When I first moved here in, full-time, in 1997, it was quite the issue, and there was much talk about the village should take control of the transportation system, and the concern was, it's our destiny, it's our lifeline to the world. At that time, I was not in favor of the island purchasing the transportation system because we weren't prepared. We were young, we didn't have the, we didn't have the finances, we didn't have the professional staff that we have now, but we've come a long way. And I feel very strongly that we need to have ownership of this transportation system, and I'm sure we can talk about more of the issues later, that what that means, but it is, we are the people who use the ferry. We don't want to leave that in the hands of someone who maybe has never been on the ferry and has no, no use, no everyday use of the ferry. It's important to us, it's important that people manage it, who understand it, that recognize the issues, and can take a creative look at how to solve some of those problems. I can't, personally, I can't imagine that we will have an authority with people scattered all over the state who will understand the issue as well as we do, who live here. And we would be committed, I would be committed into getting input from all stakeholders, not just residents, but we have businesses, nonprofits, we have full-time residents, we have part-time residents, and we have vacationers.
Thank you, Ms. Hill.
And I got the horn.
I'm going to direct the question now to Mr. McBrayer, since you didn't have that in part of your vision statement, so if you can respond to that question.
I am so glad you're asking me this question, and I was hoping that you would, so I could open remarks on something different. But no, my stance on the, on the ferry system, on the transportation system, starts with the one question, is that you can't own what you can't buy. And currently, right now, there is not a sale contract on the ferry. So everything else we talk about after that is a mute point. But on top of that, we have two things I want to bring up related to this. The first thing is this, is that putting that kind of, if we were to vote for the GO bond, the GO bond, it would weight down the financial weight of this village to an extent of almost three times, based on the value of the homes on this island, three times more than any other city in the state of North Carolina. That puts a huge burden on this island. Secondarily, is that, once again, we don't have sale contract, and we need to move this forward. We need to allow the BHITA to take ownership of controlling the ferry so that we, the village, can focus on so many of the other things that we need to focus on, whether it is the roads, whether it is the sewer system, whether it's all the many things that we need to deal with. As, as, you know, we all know, there's a limited amount of time and energy for any organization, and we need to focus on them as well.
Thank you, Mr. McBrayer. Mr. Gardner, can you answer that as well, based on your government background?
Certainly. We would remind everybody, the village has been very vocal, we wanted the Transportation Authority to work, and we thought it was going to work, until the proposal was made public in December. We had issues, issues of transparency, it was thrown on us pretty quickly without any, in any public meeting to hear the full proposal and talk about it. It was nothing. We appealed to the Government Commission, they heard us. The local Government Commission forced the TA to have a public meeting, forced them to ask questions and to answer the questions. They didn't answer any questions, they put some information on a public website, and all that information did was raise more questions. So we were hearing it from a lot of citizens at the council, so our only choice, we felt, was we need, if the TA fails, we need to be in a position, fails to get their proposal approved by the local Government Commission, we need to be in a position to step in their shoes. That's what we worked on. And my opponent mentioned legal issues, we've addressed all those, and we've learned we can do it. So we put the proposal together in January, we had a public meeting in August, we had a public hearing in August, and we intend to move forward. And we're doing it with GO bonds because we can save money on the front end, and we can save money annually, but to the tune of about a half million dollars in operating savings. The debt load, my opponent mentioned, says that we're three times higher than any other community in the state. It may be, but nobody else has to buy a ferry unnecessarily, but we might have to. Nobody else has to stabilize a beach. We have to, because the state won't give us any more money. So that's why I fully support the village owning the transportation system.
Thank you, Mr. Gardner. Mr. Drumheller?
You know, there's a very simple answer to this question. You cannot push on a string. What do I mean? You can't force Limited to sell to the village. They don't want to sell to the village. It's not going to happen. These conversations are not productive. We should be focusing on issues of greater concern to the island. Limited has different alternatives, they could sell it to the authority, they could sell it to private sector investors. They are not going to sell this to the village, no matter what you say. It's not going to happen, and it's unproductive to talk about it. The authority is a credible purchaser, they will run the system fine, they will have plenty of cash to do the needed improvements. Most of the short-term improvements are not capital-intensive. We don't need to worry about that, and we'll have adequate representation at the board level. This conversation is totally unnecessary. We should focus on the things on this island that we can control and we can make better.
Thank you. My next question. Please explain what the financial differences are between the GO bonds and revenue bonds, and which one of the two you support, I guess, if any. If the GO bond is passed, what could be the financial impact on the village and its residents? Please provide facts that support your position. I'm going to start with you, Mr. Drumheller, given your financial background.
This is an irrelevant question, and it's an irrelevant context. In simple terms, a general obligation bond is a bond that is, where the credit support is the taxpayer, and the ability of the municipality or the government to raise taxes to pay for the bond. Because of the tax base, and in this particular case, because a project actually generates revenues, there's two sources to repay the debt, the revenues and tax hikes. So the GO bond interest rate savings, in theory, not in theory, in actuality, will be different. The magnitude hasn't been determined yet, they continue to talk about the upper end of the range, but they know they were given the lower end of the range as well. Revenue bonds, in contrast, are like project bonds, and they are totally, the source of repayment is totally dependent on the revenue stream. So if something were to go wrong, and the system were down for six months or two years, then we, as island users, wouldn't have to pay anything, and you would end up dealing with your lender group to restructure the financing.
Thank you. Mr. McBrayer?
First and foremost, the GO bond versus revenue bond, I do not support a GO bond, period, especially at this amount. This town is too small. If this was a business, there is no way in anyone's logical thought process that they would think that this was a good idea. A revenue bond, obviously, as my friend, Mr. Drumheller, pointed out, is associated with the activity, the enterprise, it would be almost like an enterprise fund. And so if the BHITA were to run this with a revenue bond, I would support the revenue bond for them, because it would be on them. I do not want to look at 200 to 300 voters, 2,000 possibly, 4,000 owners on this island, and say to them that I was responsible for tying you potentially with 54-plus million dollars of responsible debt. If you do a GO bond, that is what you are doing. There is no other way around it, there is no way to sugarcoat it, there is no way to speak of it differently. It is a tax that is a liability as a mortgage on your house. You are responsible for it, nobody else. I've heard, I've listened to the village, the village has made comments about how they can't get grants, people don't want to give it to us, I don't know if the state of North Carolina thinks that we're perfectly fine standing on our own, that they just don't think we need those things. But if you go with a GO bond, and we don't pay the bills on that, on the ferry, we get to go into our back pocket with tax hikes to do so. The other thing to think about as a citizen who's voting...
Sorry. Ms. Hill?
Okay, thank you. There is a difference in a revenue bond and a GO bond, and that has been explained to you. But what I would say to you is, if the Transportation Authority says they can manage, run the ferry on revenues, then the village should be able to run the ferry on revenues. So the thing that the GO bond gives us, then, is simply an opportunity for lower upfront money, lower interest rate over time, and an option to use other sources of income, but not taxes. We could do taxes, yes, you can, under a GO bond, but if you understand that based on our current tax base, if we raised taxes one penny, that would generate $115,000 to $120,000. But if we raised the ferry rate by $1, then we're looking at $300,000 or some such number, depending on ridership. So this fear about us raising taxes seems to me a non-issue. Why would we do that when we can get more money off of the ferry by doing, raising a rate as opposed to raising a tax? You know, if the ferry can't make it on revenues, then we, then it won't make it on revenues for the Transportation Authority. But we believe them when they say that that is possible, and they've run the numbers, and that it's a profitable entity.
Thank you, Ms. Hill. Mr. Gardner?
Yes, certainly support the general obligation bond, and I don't think I need to go through the definition of each again, I think all three of my fellow panel members here have done that. But I will say that as we were deliberating which approach to take, when we decided to make a play, to develop a proposal, we hired Robinson Bradshaw out of Charlotte as bond counsel, and we hired First Tryon as financial advisor. Both of those, those firms have much and many, 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 many interactions with the Local Government Commission, and with, worked for many cities and counties in the state. We had excellent advice. It was the bond counsel, when he, when he was running through the various options for us, that, when he said, you know, if you guys do run a GO bond, you can save 5.5 million on the front, and you can save almost a half a million dollars a year in operating revenues, because the revenues of the system are going to pay the debt service and the operating expenses of the firm. He says it's a no-brainer. So we kind of all agreed immediately. And the concern about taxes are going up, if the revenues can cover the Transportation Authority's expenses, and our expenses are a half million dollar less, they can certainly cover the village's, you know, obligation to pay off the debt. So, anyway, I'll just kind of leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. In addition to the transportation system, community members have cited three key issues that face the island. One is beach renourishment, another is Wilmington Port access, and third is offshore wind turbine. Please choose one of these issues and state your position on it and why you've taken that position. I'm going to start with Mr. Gardner, since he brought at least one of those issues up.
Certainly. Well, I'll talk about, just, I can pick just one, right?
Yes.
Okay.
For now.
Then let's talk about offshore wind. For years, there's been, a number of administrations back, there was the push for renewable energy. And as the wind turbine and wind energy development has occurred over the years, offshore wind has become a bigger and bigger option, and more in play in many places around the world. Of course, we are part of that, we've got a great resource off the island, we've got rather shallow waters, and so we're a pretty, pretty good slot for such an option. However, if you, and at Duke, we had an experiment up at the Outer Banks when I was with Duke Energy, and the big concern was the view shed, what does it look like? We never got to pull that off because of the expense, and the Utilities Commission wouldn't allow us to proceed, so we stopped that project. But right now, it's projected to be 17 miles offshore. You can, you're still going to be able to see that at night, you may not see it during the day, but at night, when those lights are shining on top of 400-foot towers, you're going to be able to see that. So we've encouraged and pushed and pushed and pushed for a number of years... So we've encouraged and pushed and pushed and pushed for a number of years to move that out 24 miles. The same is, was approved for the Outer Banks and southern, southeast Virginia. All we're asking for is to get the same thing that, that they've been giving up there and we continue to push and continue to push and work with our neighboring coastal communities to do that.
Thank you. Mr. McBrayer.
Can you give me those three again, please?
One is beach renourishment, Wilmington port access, and offshore wind turbines.
Good. I'll, I'll also do the offshore. You know, this is something that I was unaware of until I started this process of running for council. And, you know, for me, one of the most beautiful things to do is to go down on the beach and to see, you know, the sunset and to be able to enjoy what we have. And renewable energy is an option that we all need to be looking for in the future. But at the same token, having it so close at the 15 to 17 mile marker, where if you've seen the pictures of these, it looks like a bunch of Christmas trees flying across the horizon at night. We don't want to have that, but what we do need to do is to do a better job, I believe, on the village of making the relationships off-island in order to, to put forth a stronger defense against the 15 mile versus the 25 miles. I think that this council needs to do a better job of reaching out. I think it needs to do a better job of being partners with the other coastal communities and the local communities like Southport and Brunswick County. And so I think that that is one of the focuses I would do. Also, I'd like to go back to, with my remaining time, just to mention the fact that with the geo bond and the ferry and the, and the revenue bond, you know, one of the concerns that I have with the statement that, you know, the ferry will pay for itself so we don't have to worry about it, is the fact that we don't want to burden ourselves with the possibility. And I think we always need to make sure of the fact that just because we say we don't want to, doesn't mean that we won't.
Thank you. Mr. Drumheller.
I'll, I'll change the subject to keep it interesting. The beach, beach renourishment and the Wilmington deepening project, they're really kind of the same issue. You know, the issue with the wind thing is aggravating and if it happens, it's going to be ugly, but it's not going to destroy the island. The Wilmington project is literally an existential issue for this island. If that, if that area gets deepened, the rate of acceleration of beach erosion is going to increase dramatically. And some people have even suggested the possibility that it could interfere with our freshwater aquifer on the island. We already have to deal with ongoing beach renourishment every several years and during the cycle, sometimes we get help from the government periodically, every, every seven or eight years, we have to pay for it. Could you imagine what it would be like if that project happens and the, and the sand is flowing off at two to three times the rate that it's flowing off now? It would be a total nightmare. We need to do everything humanly possible with ourselves and other communities that are also affected by reaching out and working with Oak Island, Southport and others to try to stop that project. It is existential.
Thank you. Ms. Hill.
Yes, thank you. I agree with Mr. Drumheller about the Wilmington dredging project. That is a, a, a big issue for us. I'll talk a little bit about me, beach renourishment, however. This really got started probably late 80s, early 90s, starting to look at that and, and the village has had a consultant who's periodically done studies and done mapping and, and to see how that works. Over time, we've actually improved our, our beaches. If you look from 10 years, the picture from 10 years ago to now, we have more sand on that beach at that, the scary area around the Cape Fear. The village, the past villages have gone to put in a terminal groin, which has been very helpful. We've, we've also do have a plan. There is a plan in place where we get sand every other time. Oak Island gets it when they dredge and then the next year we get it. We just received a good portion of sand this past spring, which was able to take it all the way up almost to the point. So it's probably as far up as we've ever been able to get that done. So there's a lot been done to stabilize our beaches. They, it continues to be important. It's something we're going to have to watch. We are due potentially for another public sand, beach renourishment in 2028, I think, or '27. We're not sure if we're going to have to do that or not because of the success of our last efforts.
Thank you. Mr. Gardner. Oh, you've already had that. Oh, we're good.
But I'll go again if you'd like. You gotta do all faces.
I know. No. Thank you very much. There are several infrastructural improvements in village construction projects in the planning stage. Can you prioritize and address those projects you perceive as the most pressing? Let's begin with Mr. Drumheller.
Well, there's, probably the most important is the sewer system because that's actually mandated by law. I don't know how many of you know, but when your sewer capacity reaches 80%, you have to start planning. When it gets to 90%, you have to start planning. With law, we, pretty critical and plans are already, to work on that and then the question is what's the best way to finance it. Secondly, then you get down to priorities. We, our group feels that public service, public safety is under-resourced and under-allocated capital. You know, the fire ladder truck is in bad shape. It needs to be replaced. And there are, there may be other areas in the public safety area where we could spend some money to make some improvements. We also need to do some work on our roads. I don't think we should wait till 2033 to work on the roads. The, the village wants to do this $2 million village hall. I asked them what their head count had increased over five years. They said two people. I don't think we need a $2 million village hall to house another two people. We could find some rental space for them or some other cheaper options, maybe an expansion like they're doing with the post office. We certainly don't need to spend $2 million for what I call a vanity project. It would be better served spending the money building up our public safety, working on our roads.
Thank you. Mr. McBrayer.
I, to kind of add on to my friend Robert's comments, the sewer system in our beautiful island, it's not really a pretty topic to talk about, but it's one that we really do need to address. My concern is, is that we have lift stations on the island, 38 of them, that are currently five years past their useful life. We are on borrowed time with something that is really going to affect us and could affect us in a bad way very quickly. Those lift stations, I've learned through this process, are not cheap. We're talking hundreds of each and unfortunately, the, the sewer restricted fund is about a million and a half dollars. Sounds like a lot of money to me. We've got a hundred million and a half dollars in the sewer that we could use. Rapid rate and we're going to be, and for those that have an issue with those, they end up having to leave them because they get condemned until it gets fixed. So I think the sewer is the number one. Number two, to put on to the public safety, I think that we're also, to add to that, is looking for a water vessel that can be used for safety issues. I know, you know, my wife Lori and I have looked at, you know, the possibility of living here for 25 to 30 years and to do that, we need to know that we can be taken off of a heart attack or something happens in the middle of the night when the ferries aren't running. After that, roads and other items, but the village hall obviously is at the bottom of that list.
Thank you. Ms. Hill.
Yes, thank you. First of all, there are a number of projects that are going on. Waste water treatment plant is, is certainly a project. We've been looking at that for some time now. There was a assessment done back in 2015 and my first year on village council. We had an update on that in terms of usage. So in, you have to, they are correct. You have to start getting a, a study done or begin to engage a contractor when you reach the 80% mark and construction starts at 90% mark. We have been under that until the year 2020, where we hit the 80% mark. We are now down to 76%, but we've already taken steps to address that. That was included in the budget for this year. So it has been looked at for some time and is being addressed. In terms of the lift stations, for example, those are also been budgeted. We have a plan over three, three years or five years to replace those. There is money in the budget for that. And for public safety, we have hired a, approved for the budget, a new position, as well as have, have already started them looking for a ladder truck, an all-purpose boat, other things. We, we gave the public safety about $93,000 worth of new equipment this year, plus a new person. In terms of getting off the island, our response time is from, I'm going to run out of time. Our response time is really good from call to getting it to you.
Thank you.
I'll stop.
Just got bonged. Mr. Gardner.
I'm just going to finish Emily's point on public safety. Our, our response time is about six minutes and 15 seconds. The, well, the national average is about 15 minutes and the, and the range in the country is six minutes to 35 minutes. So we're at 6.15 against the best of six minutes. That's pretty doggone incredible. I think our public safety folks do a great job. Now, back to the issue of infrastructure projects. Emily mentioned lift station plan. We, and as did Nathan, we've got, the, the lift stations are, have been prioritized by our public services director. We, he's got a three-year plan. He's doing one-third, one-third, one-third priorities in the first year, second priority, second year, third priority, the third year. We're going to get those lift stations either repaired or significantly outfitted and it's good, and we're going to do it for $1.5 million over three years. Roads, our opponents and some of their campaign equipment says we have no road plan until 2033. That's just absolutely not true. We repair roads every year to the tune of about 50 to 70,000 bucks. We've got, we, we repave every year. This year, for example, we're going to be paving Ibis Roost or Bald Head Winyer Creek Access. And, excuse me, we didn't, but Dublin, I do South Bald Head, you know, at the Dune Ridge on Eastside Island, down to Federal Road where it's bumpy, the, the intersection around the conservancy and, and, and we've done, you know, effectively, we do about six or eight roads a year. And in 2033, we're talking about a full island paving.
Thank you. We may, we may come back to that similar question. Now, what is your view of the role of government and your responsibilities on village council, including your answer, the role of council members in resolving disputes between the village and the HOA? Let me begin with Mr. Gardner.
Well, you know, the village, our job is to provide essential services and that's it. Okay? We don't delve into landscape guidelines. We don't delve into communications about, you know, community activities. We don't delve into those types of things. We don't, we haven't been doing surveys, but it looks like we might have to start doing surveys. So, you know, it's, we, essential services, water, wastewater, trash, stormwater, beach renourishment, roads, public safety, that's a pretty big bucket of stuff to work, work on. And so we would look to the association to, to help the, help the village with communications, barely getting it out about the things that are going on, presenting all sides of the story and let the members of the association decide to things that, and we, frankly, and got to get, we need association, association, your job. We've been experiencing.
Thank you.
We need to do essential, but it's not enough. We also need to realize that we're not here just to represent 300 voters, 350 voters, whatever the number is. There are, there are 2,000 property owners here and we have to represent all of them. We have to engage with them. We have to listen to them. We have to invite them to our meetings. You know, I don't think there's a lot of attention being paid to that group by the current council. You know, because we're a self-contained island and because limited is phasing out, there are things that we're going to have to step up to on areas like recreation and socialization. We want to make this a vibrant community that's interesting for young people, that's interesting for older people who can age in place here. And we need to start looking, working collaboratively with others. For example, the BHA, we've met with the BHA. We can work in, in quite a few areas of shared interests that will serve the, the vision of this island. So we need to move forward with a broader definition than just essential services.
Thank you. Ms. Hill.
There is certainly, there are certainly roles that government can play, roles that government cannot play. We have some restrictions. We certainly do need to work together, but we do handle, take care of some parks. We bought some Marina Park. There's a park out at Cape Fear Station. We have addressed some of those issues, but we need to, to come together and, and decide what it is each of us should be doing and what are our goals. It's been unfortunate when we've had needs for, one place where we, and is coming up to the, the road and the, comes to the, and access and, we, with the, to, we, association, some of, low at, those providing, not providing, perhaps they could, have time for, to, these things, how we're going to work together going forward, as we are an integrated community with a lot of, of diversity. I will say that on my time on council, I probably receive as many emails and calls and questions from non-residents as I do from residents. So we, we listen to those and I, I try to respond to all of those.
Thank you, Mr. McBrayer.
I am really glad that Emily kind of ended her comments on the non-owners communicating because I think that's one of the biggest things that we need to work on, on this village I started out being a renter. I started out being a homeowner that was not a full-time voting resident on this island. And I will tell you that until I became a full-time resident and also became, you know, running for council, I never felt like I had the voice or the ear or the communication into the village. The village did what the village wanted to do. Here's some things to think about with this. What do we need to do? Yes, we do need to take care of the services, the basic fundamental services. But my dear friend Scott says, well, I guess we may have to do some surveys now. You better well, we do need to be doing surveys. We need to be collective on this island. COVID has changed the face of the world. COVID has changed this island and unless we wake up and realize that since 19, the 2017 vision plan, 30% of the owners on this island have left. So we've got a whole new batch of people living on this island. We have a whole new group of individuals. The number of people that are going to live on this island full-time is going to continue to increase because of the fact that we can remote work. I remote work. My home corporate office is in DC and Las Vegas. I work from Bald Head Island. There are a lot of other people like myself and this village has got to acknowledge the needs of those people and figure out how to communicate and get to them.
Thank you. Next question. The election cycle has raised issues about the clarity of the village's financial position, planning and decision-making process. What are your thoughts or ideas about best informing and educating the village residents about funding issues? Let's begin with you, Mr. Drumheller.
Could you repeat the question? I'm sorry.
The election cycle has raised issues about the clarity of the village's financial position, planning and decision-making process. In other words, the transparency of that process. And what are your thoughts or ideas about informing and educating the village's residents about funding issues before they occur?
I think of this as trans, combination of transparency and, and engagement. I, I, I think that we need to do a much better job of both of those. We, first of all, we have to reach out to everyone, not just the 300, but we need to reach out and engage with all property owners. We need to change the nature of the council meetings. We think there ought to be an establishment of a number of informal task forces in which we encourage both voting people and non-voting people to participate on very specific issues and to give advice to the council about recommendations of how to proceed on certain issues. We think council meetings ought to have a two-way dialogue so that people come, make presentations, make comments, and we actually talk to them in the meetings. The way it works right now, it's kind of sad. People come and make statements totally ignored. Nothing happens. We need a dialogue. We need to reach out to people. We need to have a permanent Zoom option, particularly to help the non, you know, the people who are off the island so they can participate and listen to meetings if, if they're not here on the island. And there's no reason why we can't do something like that. We feel there needs to be a much more collaborative, open dialogue in the process of these meetings and an ancillary advisory committee so that we can encourage people to participate because then they'll, then we'll start listening to them.
Thank you. Mr. Gardner, back to your experience in these, can you speak?
Certainly. Big of communicating, but I've learned, and with the 24-hour news cycle, society with social media, it's really hard to communicate. And we learned that in space, Hurricane Florence, tried to communicate. We weren't getting through until it was too late. And then information was out there that caused a whole different set of issues. So since then, public information officer to help with communication, we've improved the website immensely and on providing the Zoom capability for our regular meetings. We do have public meetings and public presentations. We didn't use to be able to. We do have public meetings and public presentations we didn't used to be able to. So there's, we've come a long way in terms of communicate out. Now, it's a point about we're communicating in. We get a lot of feedback from, always talking to people, people that are permanent residents, people that aren't permanent residents. Because we don't agree with the people that show up at a meeting, we're not listening. We hear what, agree that they are in the majority. Lastly, I, from a budget, have a budget workshop and all day, sometimes people can come, people can, and we learn various department heads, what's going on. We have a present, budget presentation by the manager in May. We have another meeting and decision-making in June. So the budget is well-presented and, and people can read up on it and find out all that.
Thank you. Ms. Hill, also from your experience?
Yes. This was specifically addressed to the budget.
Basically.
And, and Ms. Gardner just mentioned the workshop or the retreat that's held every February. And so that, that retreat is a day or two days long. And at that retreat, we have invitations from all kinds of folks, from our departments, what their needs are. You learn a lot, the studies that have been, are open to the public to attend. And it's educational thing that the island, following that retreat, we then prioritize what we learn, where we think we need to go, and our, our, within the department, what they want for their budget. Those meetings are, we, budget hearing, where it's the budget, one of the first discussion. I think there was like one person on our call-in line listening in. And this is, you know, we've, just going forward. But it is, it's available and it's on the website, on the village website. Our financial advisor, financial person on the island is happy to talk with people and explain it, but it is there, it is presented to the public and it is driven to some extent what they say their needs are. And then we figure out how to budget with that and just be responsible.
Thank you. And Mr. McBride, your position as a?
Who does budgets all the time. Obviously, there's budget activity that is fair, it's, or the responses of, to council on the budget and the process and a workshop and have meetings. And it is a, to have to do, I do it for a living. But it is important. But here's where I want to draw a differentiating line between where I stand and where I think the communication has been so far about this topic. We have a line item budget right now of almost $190,000 in IT on this island. We can do $190,000 because I don't see that we're getting the value out of that at all. And when you say, oh, we have a workshop, we are changing as an island. Communication is changing. Scott brought up a great point and I appreciate you bringing that up. 24-hour news, the, the information we need to have needs to come in a way and an avenue that the people on this island can digest it, can understand it. It's simple. It's not the old school of let's go sit for four hours with somebody, one person online listening. That's not the way we communicate. You can say you're communicating, you're offering information, but you're really not communicating. Communicating is finding where your constituents are, meeting them where they are, and communicating to them in a way that makes sense to them. And that's where I stand on it.
Thank you. Mr. Drumheller?
I already.
You spoke? Yes. Okay. Okay. So. Okay. So let me, let me ask you one more question and we'll go to the closing comments. Do we have time for that? Because I think this one is one that several brought up. And I think some of you brought, brought it up in your responses. As the island expanded, friction has developed between owners and visitors lending itself to the sense, itself to, sense that community is being lost. What are your thoughts or ideas or actions that the council should take so that this doesn't become a resort destination? Let's begin with you, Mr. Drumheller.
I, I think this is a question about, maybe I'm changing the question, but it seems to me this is a question about renters and renter, issues with renters. I, I think the issue with renters, obviously, we need renters. Many people on the island own these homes, the second homes, and they need their rental income. We don't want to dissuade people from renting. What we need to do is educate the renters. And so the issue with renters comes down to, I think, two points. Education and what I call touchpoints. Education means teaching them about our values, our environment, our ordinances, our history, things that are important to us, how to behave on the island. We've spoken with the conservancy, we've spoken with BHA, they have volunteered to create content on these issues. We have a, a TV channel. We could set up screens, TV screens on the mainland, in the inside terminal and the waiting terminal and use that as a vehicle to educate people with, you know, various issues that are important to us. Can also have things put on the webpage. We can create a, we'd like to create a welcome center at Deep Point with information for day trippers, where to go, what to do, what's interesting about the history of the island, and, and handouts and things like that. So there's, you know, it's important also things with the rental agents and the packages that they give to renters. I mean, so we need to create as many touchpoints as we can with renters and day trippers so that they have some idea of what's going on over here and what our expectations are.
Thank you. Mr. Gardner, from your perspective for sustained growth development?
Certainly. Well, it's, we're going to, we're going to grow more. There's, you know, a lot of lots left to build houses on, so we're probably going to have more renters over time. I, I think the club has been able to get close to resolving that because they've limited the number of memberships that they can sell. And, and they've done some things to, you know, promote member use and limit temporary use so that, you know, they're starting, I think they're ahead of the rest of the island on trying to figure some of that stuff out. And I think we can, I don't know how much of that the village can do or how much of that necessarily the association can do, other than educate and inform. And I, I agree with Robert that it's, it's all about helping people understand who we are and why we are who we are and, and how much we value what we have here. And if they, we welcome them, we want them to come, but take care of things. We, we are providing a wonderful place for them. We, we're really hard to do that. We expect them to respect us and, and to return the favor while they're here. And we, we can all do more in that regard to help that situation.
Thank you. Ms. Hill?
Yes. I, I certainly agree with, with both of my colleagues here at the table in terms of, of educating people and help them understand about our island. But it also goes back to what Nathan said. We have to be able to do it in a way that people actually see and read the material and pay attention to the material. I think there's a lot of touchpoints, one of those being the, the rental agencies and homeowners. We need to talk about how many people are, is a reasonable number to have in a rental house, for one thing. You know, how many bathrooms are, not, not that you can sleep 15, but if you've only got three bathrooms, you need to be thinking about this. But we, we do need to meet as many places as possible. I kind of like the idea and have thought of already of sort of a welcome center that could be over in Deep Point in that little room that used to have, you know, displays in it. That is one thing we can do. Public safety is also, has initiated a bike-riding campaign, so to speak, and they are out riding bikes, talking to visitors, trying to interact. And even, even though it's not on bikes, there's a real increase, push to be responsive to the community and that includes our visitors. So I think there are many ways that we can address and it is important.
Thank you. Mr. McBride?
Sure. I think we have a very interesting situation on the island because unlike other villages where the village has always been kind of the center and the hub and the leadership point of view for the, for the village, we've had Limited. And Limited is going away. And that is going to create a vacuum on this island. And I think that the village and the council going forward is going to have to figure out how to fill a void that is going to be there that has not been there in the past. I don't think we talk about that. I think we ignore it. We, we just think that, you know, the Mitchell family came on this island and built some buildings and all that, but they created a culture, they created something that we all fell in love with. I really struggle with the they and thems that we say on this island. And it really personally bothers me because I look around and I have yet to find anyone on this island that was born here. Just because we got here before the day tripper that comes over tomorrow doesn't make us better than them. It just means we found a beautiful place in the universe first. And so we need to start treating them like they are like us. We are stewards of this island. They can be stewards of this island. We should put forth with them that they should see that as a, a part of them coming over to visit Baldhead Island.
Thank you. Now, can you each take one minute to summarize your mandate as an incoming council member?
We agreed to two minutes, ma'am.
Do we have two minutes? Okay, we'll do two minutes. Thank you. I thought I'd stay within the, the hour. Okay, let's, let's give you two minutes as planned. Robert, do you want to start?
Why don't we start from the other side this time?
Okay, let's start with.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hey, Robert, I'll give you some of my time. How's that?
There you go.
Could you repeat the question? Yeah, yeah. There you go. I live on an island and we live on an island. And I think that one of the wonderful things about this island is that when we come here, we feel like we can get away from so many different things that are in this world. We get to see the beautiful sunsets, we get to see the sunrise without any impediment of a, of an island or a mainland in the way. We get to see the forests as we drive through, go from one end of the island to the other. And we get to see the, the marsh and we get to see all the beauty that we have. But today, we've been able to talk about the things that are important that maybe aren't so heartwarming, but are important for the future of this island. I want to thank everybody that's on this table because, you know, I did check and the fact is, is that, you know, we can probably double Scott's paycheck next year and won't hurt the budget at all because we're all volunteering. We want to be a part of making this island great in the future. We have different directions we feel like we want to take to get there. I am, you know, not for the bond. I am for communicating to every stakeholder on the island, to give a voice to everybody on this island so that we can make the right decisions, not for just today, but for the next 20 years. I hope that you will vote for me or consider voting for me for council. I appreciate being here today. I thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to everybody and I wish everybody a wonderful day. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Hill?
Thank you. This is a wonderful place. It was a wonderful place when I got here and it's still a wonderful place in my mind. And, and we have growing pains and we have to manage those growing pains. We can't stop the growth, we can figure out how to address it. But for me, and as I look at going forward on this island, first of all, I want to recognize that there's a lot that has been done. And what I can assure you is that I would govern with integrity. And so what does that mean? I think number one, it means understanding all the issues completely as well as we possibly can, communicating factually the information, taking accountability for the, for what we have done and the responsibility, not for what we're doing now, but for, for the future. I think we have to communicate accurately all that information. I think we have to listen respectfully with an open mind and with an interest of all stakeholders. And I really think we need to remember to respect our village staff. They have a lot of knowledge, they have a lot of professionalism, and we also have the, the experts in our field that we need to also, in various fields that we need to also pay attention to. So we're a council of five and we should act as a council of five. I believe we should work to compromise and come up with a consensus. I think we should be making decisions based on the issues that are best for the entire island and not a viewpoint. And I think we should be responsible for the consequences that we make. So as you go forward, I ask you to, to vote not just on issues, but on who you think can best represent you and, and govern this island. Who understands the issues? Who has the time to take care of those issues? What is their approach to government overall? And, and how would they handle some, something in the unexpected? Because that does happen.
Thank you. Mr. Gardner?
Yes. This election is about choice. It's your choice between pragmatic thinkers, people with experience, been dealing with these issues, about list, people who listen to all sides, find common ground, negotiate and compromise, and come up with solutions that, that serves all property owners, on all property owners on the island in, 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 in a way that does the most, does the best for the most. Excuse me. And it's also about providing honest and accurate information and continuing to work to find ways to get the message out. We know we've got, continue to have more work to do in that front. As hard as we're trying and as far as we come, we've come, we've still got a ways to go. But make no mistake about it, this election is also about the transportation system, more specifically about whether we should be owned or operated by the village or by the state. The voters can choose a village-run system accountable to all the property owners on the island with a $5.5 million investment to make upfront on capital improvements and $450,000 a year to make on operational improvements. It can choose, or it can choose an authority that has only four of 11 members that are required by statute to be residents of Baldhead Island, seeking bond approval for an amount that results in a triple B-minus credit rating, which is one level above junk bond status with no room to borrow additional funds to make any more immediate and much-needed improvements. If the voters choose yes for the GO bond, we are confident that the LGC will look favorably upon the village's proposal. If the village proposal is chosen over the TA proposal, while it is highly likely that Limited will continue discussions with third parties, we're also confident they will hear us out. We want to give serious consideration to the entity whose voters demonstrated a desire for the village's control going forward. We're confident we can negotiate a fair deal with Limited, a win-win arrangement that provides them and the Mitchell family a fair price and it provides the property owners and users of the system a reasonable, a quality system for a reasonable price.
Thank you, Mr. Drumheller.
Thank you. First, vote no on the referendum for the GO bond. It's a poor choice for island property owners. It's really time to stop discussing a hypothetical sale to the village, which is not going to occur, and let's get on with the business of improving the island. Second, with respect to the other issues, the future of the island is clearly at an inflection point. We want to preserve what is so special here. We must act now. We cannot afford to wait until later. There are three positions open this year and this presents you with an opportunity that you will not have again for four years, to implement positive change and to redirect the council that is increasingly out of touch with the pulse of island residents. We need a council that is accountable to you. We need a council that is a thoughtful steward of the budget and future debt needs. We need a council that will invest in improved public safety. We need a council that will actively engage and work directly with property owners. This is the vision of the Lou, Nathan, and Robert team. This is your time to make it happen. In closing, I just want to quote from an old African proverb, "It takes a village to save a child." Well, in our case, it takes the village to save our island. And when I say village, I don't mean five people, I mean everyone. You are our village, you are our future. Thank you.
Thank you. We thank you very much, panel, for your responses. I, I would have liked to have asked a couple more questions, but I think you were very thorough overall. Thank you very much.
Thank you for volunteering.
Good job. Well done. Good job. Good job. Good job. Good job. Good job. Good job.